To read a list of names, addresses, and amounts. And at the end of that, if there's anyone here that has anything to do with those properties, that would be your time to speak up. Tina Terry, one oh nine West North, seventy two thirty four. James Cox, one oh five West Jasper, fifty six forty three. Devin Joseph, four oh three South James, one sixty five seventy two. Curtis Evans, two fourteen North Iroquois, one oh four forty one. Dave Frampton, three ten North Benton, one hundred point sixty nine. Michael McMorro, four five oh five, South Newton, seventy three fourteen. Clinton Harrison, one fourteen, in Boylan, one thirty one seventy seven. Brett Sherman, two oh five, East Maple, ninety two thirty. Randy Claybrough, three twenty West Mill, seventy three oh one. Andrea Valencia, three ten South Iroquois, fifty one eighty seven. Henry Hawkins, one oh two, South Newton, eighty one seventy. Joseph Irwin, one twenty three, West Jasper, one oh two, eighty seven. And Candace Wolkoieak, one twenty one North Iroquois, fifty three thirty seven. Is there anyone here for any of these properties? Entertainer motion to disqualify. All fair and safe building hearings, Jeff.
On the first one, the one twenty nine West Prairie Street, I didn't bring that file, but I'm familiar enough with it. This is not here.
Morrow and Burton called me this morning and he's still in the hospital.
Do you want to continue it? And I don't know what he was working to do, so I can't.
Just continue it since we're not really recording either.
And I'll notice him up on that.
As long as we're transferring titles to the panel.
Oh, right.
And where I think we find the, that is last meeting.
Review hearing in thirty days.
I'll make that motion. All favor.
Three eighteen North Newton Street. Josh and Sarah Meiser, are they here?
Yeah.
So this was an order. It was modified. You'd made some progress at the last meeting. You continued it thirty days so that John could meet and show them what needed to be done.
Yep, we did, and they're working on it. He, uh, he can only work like a half a day or, and then he has to take a couple of days off because he's disabled. So he needs a little more time, but he just, he's put new wood up around it.
Can you tell me what, so I can put it into an order, what he's ordered to do, uh, if I give him whatever they say time went?
Just finished from the, that front porch. And he's, he put a new, uh, ceiling on top of it so it quit leaking. They cleaned up some with brush. There's a lot of stuff on the front porch, but removed some of that.
So is the only item left to do to finish the front porch?
That's basically it.
Did they need to remove anything from the front porch?
Pardon me?
Do they need to remove anything from the front porch?
Well, most of it's, uh, stuff that will be moved back in the house when they.
How much time do you need?
Uh, another month, we're, we're trying to help him get it done. Try less than that, but with him, I just want to get some extra time if you can get time.
I'll make a motion to continue it for thirty days. All favor.
So that hearing date while they're here is? October twenty first?
Yep.
At seven o'clock?
Can we have a different date? I'm sorry, there, do we have plans? Is that okay? Or do I have to be here for that date? Can I have it a sooner date or a later date than that one? I mean, I'll take the week early.
Yeah, if it's done, then John can report that, but I mean, so if you're planning on, you probably want to talk to John when you think it's done now. And make sure he agrees, because if he doesn't agree and you don't show up, we're gonna have a problem.
Of course.
Okay, okay. So, so you, you know how to contact? You know how to?
Yeah, please then, call.
Okay. So yeah, just let him know when you're done and, and he can, he can tell the council on the paper. Okay. The next one is, uh, three, or six twenty three South Newton. Caesar Varelius?
Yeah. Present.
All right, and so. A twenty-five hundred dollar fine was held in abeyance. And the following items were to be completed by tonight. Rotted windows need to be replaced. Remove vegetation overgrowing the property. Repair the back porch. Repair the soffit on the back of the house. And repair the back roof of the house. And what say you?
He's done a great job on it.
Okay. Is all that done, or do we need to continue this, or?
No, the outside, they were stationed up, uh, Friday, I think I was there. And I inspected the outside and everything was fine.
Is it ready to be released? Is that your right?
As far as the outside, yes.
Do you need to see the inside, or? I'm not sure.
They, we, uh, tore the inside of it out, but they're going to be moving to do something down, uh, up at Francisville. Because it needs to get to, get done before the weather comes here. So as far as anything else that needs to be done, it's just inside.
And was the inside part of your order anyway?
It was to begin with, but they have tore everything out of.
Oh.
Empty it, and they use dumpsters and.
So would, would you, uh, release this one? Have him inspect it over the winter and, uh, then decide whether there needs to be a new UVO with new volumes, or?
Well, they're, you know, they're in the middle of major reconstruction of this house, so, uh, they've complied with everything that needed to be complied with with the current, uh, building. Whereas I don't think we really have any choice but, but to release it. And I think we should because they've done a fine job, uh, working the grounds and, and the building. So I have no reason to believe why they won't continue doing a fine job on the inside. So I would make a motion to re-release.
I would second that.
All favor.
Aye.
And that clears that fine itself in abeyance?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and then I had two others, uh, that weren't on your list that were set for tonight. Three twenty one South James Street. Okay. Karen Rogers.
That's my secretary.
Okay, are you Karen Rogers?
Yes.
Okay. And so this was. An unsafe building to remove trash debris and fire hazardous material in and about the premises. Repair or rehabilitate the unsafe building to bring it into compliance with the building codes. And, um. So have you, uh, have you looked at it lately, John?
Yes, they mowed around it a little bit. Uh, that's all I, I can see that they've done.
Do, um, what, do you know what the repairs were that needed to be done? Oh, you got pictures, okay.
Lot of stuff, lot of cleanup too, and the garage also.
That, that needed to be done, or that was done?
No, it is.
Let me, before we start into the evidence part, do you dispute that it's an unsafe building with, uh, items in the yard, junk in the yard? Before we talk about the repairs?
I wouldn't call it necessarily unsafe at this point, it does need cleaned up, yes.
So part of the unsafe building law covers the premises and, and what's in it?
This, this is my first time being up here in months. I haven't been able to get up here and go on for a bit. Um, I do plan on coming out and cleaning some stuff up. And we do have, uh, a buyer to be looking at the house. So finally just whip their hand and clean up it and let somebody else take care of it.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out if we're, if there's an agreement before we take evidence, because there's not an agreement. So that's all I'm trying to figure out. Do you disagree that there are things in the yard that need to be removed?
Of course. I just haven't been able to get up here.
Okay, okay, so.
I haven't had a chance to see it yet to know what's out there, because there were squatters in there that we removed. And since then it was boarded up, so nobody else got back in. And I, I wasn't unsure of, like, whatever's out there to get done. But I can easily get over there this week and probably take care of most of it, make it look presentable.
Do you, uh, John, what were the repairs that you wanted done?
Well, all the windows are covered, so they'd have to do something with the windows apparently. But I can't see what, uh, what that is, that all comes up. There's, uh.
There should be new, the, the windows were replaced a few years back.
Those were boarded up primarily to keep people from getting back in the house again.
Again.
I can attest to that. Thank you. Um, other than the windows, John, what else did you see?
There's, uh, back porch, other than cleanup, uh, the front porch needs half of us there and half of the business. So they either tear the front porch off or repair it. And there's so much. Trees and bushes and trees around it, it's, just need to come down. There's overhang on the back of the house.
Or, like, trees overhanging in the back of the house?
Well, uh, the overhang on the back of the, that part of the house.
Okay. That needs to repair. So back porch roof, is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
I'm making a list.
There was a possibility that the back porch was going to be torn off. But it didn't get that far.
So it was, or anything else, John? Before, before I'm trying to get, find out if we have an agreement still.
The garage needs to be, uh, gets all wide open.
Does it have a door on it? Does it have a?
It has doors, it has doors that closed and a side door. And those were closed.
So, so what he's alleging, and, and what we would have a hearing about tonight and, and get into the evidence, if you don't agree. And so I'm just trying to figure out if you agree. That the yard needs, has junk trash and debris that needs to be cleaned up. The windows need to be restored or uncovered or whatever that, whatever's, whatever's covering them up, whatever they're covering. If it's broken underneath these.
No, none of it's broken underneath. It's just that was all boarded up because nobody seemed to, you know, couldn't keep, keep people out.
People kept breaking in.
On this list that we're gonna agree on or not agree on. The front porch is half there and it either needs to be torn off or repaired.
Yes.
Uh, there's whole brush, like, trees, it sounds like, growing.
Around the house, and I did clean some of that up last year, and some of it's grown bad sense.
And the back porch roof, do you, do you know what he's talking about? That, that it looks like it's open?
At one point when the previous person we had in there that was gonna be fixing it up in red tone type situation. And that all went completely south, which unfortunately ended up with squatters in the house. Um, so I don't know exactly what's been done since that point. But I knew that they were tearing that off, so yes, I don't know what's been done since, so I can't tell you what's actually there. But yeah, that was part of originally what was gonna happen, that back porch was gonna be torn out.
And the garage door needs to be closed. So, so based on that, do you agree with the order? Or disagree with the order? Because if you disagree, we're gonna have a hearing. That's all I'm, that's all I.
Basically, it sounded like, yeah, I know what, what all has to be done.
And they're going to ask, how much time are you gonna need to do all of that?
Uh, I can get cleanup done within the next couple of weeks. And again, we've got somebody to come take a look at the place and possibly just buy it, and maybe we'll be restoring it themselves. So I don't, that's why I haven't come over to do anything with destruction or construction. Trying to find a buyer that's willing to take over the project and handle.
So they, you know that you're required to disclose that there's this unsafe building order?
Correct.
Yes.
And they're required to comply with the.
Correct.
Yes, you've dealt with them before, if I can get here in a second.
There's also a lot of big limbs in the back. It's covered up by brush that you can't see.
Big what in the back?
Lims.
Big limbs in the back.
Okay, there was a brush pile that I recall in the back yard. And I found out we couldn't burn that, uh, so we'll have to figure out something to get that removed, yes.
Do we still have out here for residents? So if it's vegetation, tree limbs, shrubs, brush, you can dump it for free during business hours north of town here at the sewer plant.
Okay, okay.
Not, no construction materials, no trash.
It would just be limbs and brush and stuff, that'd be fine.
I believe you've dealt with Manuel Moran, or two, purchased two houses here in town. He approached me in buying my house.
Give me your name again, please.
Trent Rogers.
Um, and so I heard a couple of weeks to clean up the, the yard, but what after that? Either you're gonna sell it or?
Yeah, we're working, if, if we can work out the deal to sell, I would not be touching the porch or the back. If it comes to be longer than that, I can go over there and start doing that myself after I get the cleanup done, so.
So thirty days? Like enough to be thirty days? I'll make a motion.
Okay, so continue, like a progress?
Yep.
Instead of hearing in thirty days, that'll be October twenty first?
Okay.
At seven o'clock?
All favor.
And then there's one more. Four sixteen North Newton Street. Mary, uh, Jeff and Mary Miller?
Yeah.
There you are. You were ordered to remove a building. Do you know why they're saying that? Do you disagree with that order?
So we might have to remove it, but it'll take most of it down.
Um, I suppose you got photos of that, do you, John?
Got some.
What, um, what, what part would you, what part do you think needs to come down?
Well, most of it. I'm just gonna leave like a ten by twenty shed.
I don't, I don't put the property, so that's why I'm asking.
What part are you gonna keep?
Keep the northeast corner.
So if you take the rest of it down, will that stay structurally sound?
Yeah. There are walls inside. So I'm just gonna use one of the interior walls to make the exterior. And put a different roof on it.
So when you get done, it'll be according to building codes?
Yeah. In fact, I'll take it down, rip off the roof and put it on the sides, and it'll be sealed up good.
How much time would you need to do that?
I'd say a couple of months at least, but.
I'll make a motion to do it in sixty days.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
So Jeff, that is November eighteenth? That's it. Okay, that's all.
Do you have anything else, John?
I have, uh, four voting permits and two inspections. That's it.
That's it? Anybody have anything else for John? Financials, Tina.
All right, at the end of August, in our general, we ended with three hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Water operating, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Sewer, ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-one cents. And it gives us a rainfall of two million, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and forty-nine cents.
Can we conduct a public hearing?
Yes, um, public hearing for twenty-twenty-five budget. In our general, we asked for five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Four hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars comes from property taxes. Our rainy day, we asked for twenty-five thousand. Local road street, twenty-four thousand. MBH, seventy-five thousand. CCI, five thousand. CCD, twenty thousand. Our, uh, CCNG, N dot grant, two hundred and forty thousand. And our TIP fund, a hundred thousand.
So if I have any comment or questions regarding the budget?
It's a lot of money.
I don't know if this pertains, but what happens to the, like, all the people that owe money? If they don't pay it, like, the fifty-six dollars or a hundred, that, the, what you did.
That's, all, all those that I read off at the beginning, that's all for the waterworks.
Yeah.
Okay, the waterworks is actually a separate legal entity from the town. Okay? So that's where the waterworks, this is like property tax money is what she's talking about here. When it comes to the waterworks, uh, in fact, we made a motion to, to shut those people's water off. And then they have to pay to have that water turned back, they have to bring their bill current and pay to have their water turned back on to get that resolved. Property taxes, on the other hand, if they don't pay their property taxes, then it's just like any other unpaid property taxes. Eventually, uh, it will come up through a tax thing.
But on the waterworks, what if they don't pay? What if they just move out of town?
Well, it just becomes a, a small, a bad debt or a small claims, court, court claim.
Okay.
Like, just like any other debt that you refuse to pay, NIPS go or anything like that.
Okay.
Budget though, does anybody have any questions or comments on budget?
Okay, following this meeting, any ten or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate, or tax levy by following an objection petition with the proper officers of the Goodland Town. Not more than seven days after the hearing.
Fire department.
Since the last town council meeting, the departments responded to nineteen EMS calls, six fire calls, one NCI activation. Our monthly training was conducted, still working towards grant completions. And our maintenance schedules are being looked at at the trucks currently.
We've had a situation where, uh, they've been called out, I think, five times for someone's automatic alarm that keeps going off. It was, what, two last month and three this month?
Yeah.
Sometimes it's the middle of the night.
Yeah.
It, it's kind of gotten to be an issue now. Like, your homeowner's insurance has a clause there, the homeowner's insurance will pay the fire department if the fire department responds to your house. But this is certainly to a person's house. And, you know, they don't seem to have an incentive to get their fire alarm fixed so that it doesn't do this. So, um, I think we should probably talk about, you know, maybe once it's okay, maybe twice it's okay. But after that, if they don't get the alarm fixed, I think maybe they should get billed.
A big bill too.
Well, I don't know how big it is, my.
Uh, there's a, there's a cap of five hundred.
Yeah.
Is it for ours that had cap, or is it for?
No, it's not true.
The, uh, fiber people wrote our, our telephone line and, you know, every weekend we were getting alarms from the alarm company because they couldn't communicate. Because as soon as it rained or got a little bit wet, they finally got that fixed.
We had the same problem with useful products.
And if it was something like that, it would be, it'd be one thing, but.
It's an actual sensor inside the gentleman's garage. He's fully aware of it. I made, uh, contact with him, I gave him a verbal warning, next time I have to bill him. I have to, we're using way too much fuel.
Yeah. Not only that, but, you know.
You're getting up on bed. Or you're leaving your family or anything, or an event for your kids or something, I mean.
So last I knew, Vince Leir charges five hundred after the third incident.
Like per year? So they allow three per year, or?
I don't know the timing of it, I just know if there's the third, basically if there's a third mistake and there's a call, there's no fire, they'll charge you five hundred dollars. I don't know if that was several years ago, so that has changed.
I would make a motion after two.
Per year?
Yeah, but they, they would charge.
Two false alarm?
I would second that.
All favor.
Aye.
But we can't make an argument, it's hard.
Yeah.
You can argue, but, uh, how's that one?
Is that the policy for going forward for everybody? You could add to your reimbursement, I mean, yeah, yeah, it should probably be documented so that Steve, where the council's gonna wonder where you collected money if you don't have it in the form of the.
Are we gonna collect it though?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is this really our collection?
Or do we let them collect it?
I have a billing company.
So we would, we would just, we're just encouraging the fire department? Giving, giving them something to stand on that they can, they can call.
I would do it to your billing company.
Okay.
Yeah, it's better you get the.
Is that it, Brian?
That's it.
Does anybody have anything else for the fire department? Police department?
We had thirty-three calls, seven were covered by county, ten by us, sixteen public service. Five were handled by me, five by the deputies, one arrest, and eight ordinance violations.
On those ordinance violations, were any of those tall grass for the two houses on North Iroquois? West North Street, which is one behind?
Yes.
And then one twenty-four North Newton?
Yes.
So neither one of the ones on Iroquois have been touched, mowed, trimmed?
Remind me of the ones on Iroquois.
One seventeen and one twenty-one North?
On the other side of your old lot?
Yes, south side of that.
No, they are not.
So those, those have been, they haven't been mowed for?
They're not mowing the back, are they?
They're not mowing the front. They're not mowing them at all.
They were mowing the front at the beginning of the season? But they probably have mowed it.
I have the letters from Michael Darts, Tina Terries.
Tina Terries, the one on West North Street?
Yes.
And then one twenty-four North Newton, I noticed that they're mowing just the front around their porch. But they're, it's Dick Wheelock's old house.
Okay.
They're, they're back, you can't even see that barn.
Yeah, we mow up to that line on the back side?
I mean, it's not been touched back there.
At all this year?
No. And that's, I mean, we're getting ready to develop that lot behind it and it.
Same, I believe, I mowed Tina Terries.
Last Thursday?
Was it last Thursday, or was it two Thursdays?
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday? I mowed it then.
I haven't been back by hers, I just noted that that was one of the ones I had.
Took the bush off down there and mowed the whole front with that, then went back with a grass hopper and finished it. Uh, but that one didn't get mowed.
You can't do the backyard correct because of everything that's back there.
I can do some of it, but there's a lot of stuff piled up behind the house. I just get as close as I can.
I've had a lot of complaints from the neighbors to the west of her with snakes and mice and.
Has she been given a notice for the junk behind her house? Is that what it is, that you can't mow?
I don't know what kind of junks back there. There's a couple pushmowers.
In her yard?
In the backyard, yeah.
Like, that's a, that's part of our regular two hundred and fifty dollar work, yeah. If we can notice them for that too.
Okay. Also their one for the junk. Anybody have anything else for them?
She hadn't trimmed the trees and brush up around the house either, has she?
I don't even think she's living there.
No.
I doubt it.
Is it vacant?
Just in the front where they did the porch.
Yeah, the, the one tree they took down. And it's so uneven, there's rocks and stuff up there, I get, like I said, as close as I can.
She has a hole in the roof?
It's rotted out.
Driving west. Coming from the middle, driving west. There's some skylight in there.
You wanna go down and do a walk around for EVO?
For who?
My unsafe building order?
Where's one?
Tina Terries. One oh nine West. One oh nine West North Street, Jim.
Hole in the roof. In the house?
Where the skylight is.
Your.
Rotted up?
Well, you'd think you would've fixed that.
Can I do it?
I've turned it out.
It'll be a nice day tomorrow.
Anybody have anything else? Anybody have anything else? Street water and sewer case.
All right, on streets, uh, the community crossing paving project has been completed, um, and they did all of our patches around town as well, so we should be good to go now. Uh, we will be trimming a few trees that hang over the roadways in the upcoming week, uh, specifically down on the south side of town, there's a few, uh, obstructing some stop signs and stuff. In front of you, Jim, uh, we have the bid for the sidewalk, um, in front of Mivlarta. Um, we believe the approved amount was for fifteen thousand, uh, the bill, the bid came in at sixteen thousand, six oh two. Um, so, we just, we were curious how you wanted to proceed with, with that.
Make a motion, we approve another thousand, six, sixty-two dollars to add to that for that sidewalk.
All second?
All favor?
I don't think I'll make that handicap accessible.
So, the side going to the alley is, well, decent, um, so we're gonna kind of bring that out a little bit further, so it can be a ramp on that side, and then a ramp on Newton Street. And we talked with the owner of Mivlarta, he said anybody who is handicapped can come in that side door, because that one's got a nice ramp off the alley there, too. So, to get that front sidewalk to where it's ADA accessible, it'd have to be a really weird ramp system going up that way. I don't know if there's, if the sidewalk is wide enough for it.
There's a step where you have to go into theirs, is that step gonna be gone, or is that a step?
Trying to remember what we decided, I think the step was gonna be gone, but I don't, I don't remember for sure, but we can talk to him again and make sure. I think, I think the step is gonna stay, it's just gonna be a little bit wider, so it's not just a little eight-inch step, it'll be a foot or two. Good on them?
So, good?
Uh, sewer, we are waiting for the sewer plant contract, completed a few items, he's, he's completed most of them, Brian will touch on the rest. We are still waiting on Bill Anderson for our influent flow meter, um, they came back shortly after our last business meeting, the whole motherboard was fried, uh, so they sent it off. We called him again today, he's hoping by Friday, everything will be back, he's got it blocked off to where he can come in and reinstall it. Uh, but we're going on three months now of not having record of our flows, so item's not gonna be too happy, but we don't have a secondary system to monitor our flows, so it'll have to be what it is. Waterside, Ken Smith will, uh, be handling our lead and copper surveys, uh, we have sheets in the office that people can come in and fill out on their own, and he's gonna do the, the legwork on the rest of it. Um, on the parks, we're still waiting on a schedule, or we're still on schedule for Ward Excavating to run the sewer force main to Foster Park buildings.
That one tree is dead, but the other tree is a pretty nice tree, is he gonna kill those, that tree if he digs a ditch all the way down?
So, I believe what the plan is, is we are going to trench towards the park street, and then turn it and get closer to the road, and not just do a straight shot from the lift station. So, we'll probably hit some roots, but hopefully we won't damage too much. We'll, we'll just have to see once we, once we start heading that way, um, I'm hoping we don't damage them.
Should we consider boring it?
We can consider it, I, I can, uh, I can...
We're talking expense, where you guys have traded Ward some, some labor or something to...
For the trailer, yeah.
But, that's a pretty nice tree.
Yeah.
And it's a park, you know?
Right, yeah, we can, we can take a look and see, see what we're thinking, what we're gonna do.
Also, uh, when people were, when Town and Country was paving Newton Street, they hooked the man, the top of the manhole and moved it about three inches, and it's still out of place, what are we gonna do with that?
Has Rod said anything to you about that?
It's gonna be one of those warranty items, Ian, Ian, Rod and Town and Country are gonna have to figure out how to fix that. I don't think it's the town's issue by any stretch, I mean, realistically, I don't even think it's Rod's issue, I think it's Town and Country's issue.
So, you think it was done in conjunction with Rod's part of the paving, not with the town's part of the paving?
I mean, it's a blurred line right there, right?
It is the new manhole, so it was in his gravel patch.
Right.
Across there, but they didn't really, since that road's getting paved anyway, all they had to do was just oil the gravel there, so it had a nice base before they paved. That's really all they had to do to prep it there, and that made it different.
But they dug around the manhole with a, with a skid steer, and that's where they stacked it and pushed it over, and they didn't realize that they had, apparently, and dumped two feet worth of asphalt into the manhole. Which then Rod dug, complete all of that out to open up the sanitary lines to be able to run through the new lift station. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna include it on the punch list with Rod, so that he can get with them and they can discuss it. Um, I think Rod has every right to tell them, this is on you, so get it fixed. So, I, I think we just gotta kind of wait that out, see, see where they go, I mean, Town and Country's continued to do you guys' pavement for years, I, I would think that they'd want to continue to do it. So, I think between Dustin, Case, Rod, kind of pushing on a little, I, I think that they should come back and cut it out, slide it back over, and give it a set, first of all.
Before we go on with you, Ryan, uh, Case, did you have anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Anybody have anything for Case?
On the, the, um, sewer main to Foster Park is, I mean, I know that we traded labor or whatever with, with, uh, Ward Excavating, is that part of the holdup? We're not a priority because we traded, and he's not.
A lot of it's got...
I feel like that's been kind of sitting there for a while.
It has been a while, um, we are still waiting on NIPS go to for power, so I feel like that's gonna be the hold, the main holdup. I will say with all the, with all the Shriver stuff going on last couple weeks, a lot of stuff's got pushed back, um, but I would think here, definitely before the weather turns, but I'm thinking here before the next meeting, he should be over here and, uh...
That's kind of what I was, you know, with the weather coming the next couple months, where we're, we're not digging anything.
Right, yeah, he, we should get it done way before then.
Anything else for Case? Go ahead.
As Case stated, uh, the, the project is substantially complete, the work that we're doing is running the sewer treatment plant.
So, so it's, it's tied into the system now?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's been running for a couple weeks now.
Got a week here.
The, uh, there's two areas on, on the other side. So, it is considered substantially complete, we have, um, a few things that we have to discuss when it comes to, um, uh, what we, what we can do about, uh, the, uh... Oh, I'm gonna say it wrong, because I, uh, liquidated damage, sorry, yeah. So, uh, as we know, Rod, uh, was supposed to have the project done on May the eleventh, the substantial completion came on August the twentieth, that's a hundred and ninety days. He also gets thirteen days back for weather that he incurred during the, the original project, so it's ninety-six days that, um, was, uh, considered liquidated damage, right? So, that comes out to forty-eight thousand dollars that you guys could hold against him for liquidated damage. The, uh, technically, the damages part was, any time that I had to be up here, additional on top of, of past May the eleventh, because our contract was for May the eleventh as well. And so, um, that money comes out to, and I had Dave do this, uh, Tina, I think he has one last bill that he has to send you that will bring it to this total, but it will be twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. So, while you guys can technically claim the forty-eight thousand dollars, and that's completely your right to do that, the actual damages were twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty.
Were there any other actual damages aside from?
That's when we have to ask Dustin and Case if that, I called Case before, or Dustin before, to talk to him, and he didn't think of anything, but...
I mean, the, the ditch has been so low, we can't discharge anyway, um, we haven't had any overflows, um, I couldn't think of anything either.
Right, I thought there was a connect, wasn't there still a connection that we had to, pipe connection we had to make, or has that been done?
That's done. Yeah, it's, it's, um, what's left are punch list items, and, um, a lot of that he's going to be doing in the next two weeks, he, well, right around now is the correct time to do seeding on a massive scale, like he's gotta do along the ditch, and that, and it's, I mean, we're not getting any rain. And it would, it would be a waste of his money and time to come and do that right now, so he's, I think, his last communication with you guys, well, it seems gonna be here at the end of September, was, we should start to see some temperature change over in that. Um, he's gotta come down and, uh, do seeding and mulching along there, he's got some dirt to remove, um, from, uh, in the farm field where the entrance was, some work to do around the water treatment plant, and some mul, seeding and mulching out at the sewer plant as well. Which is all pretty standard stuff, um, and he knows he's gotta do it, and, uh, he is legally required to do anything over the, in the next year. So, um, with that, again, you guys can choose to, to do the forty-eight thousand dollars, or you can choose to cover your damages, whichever you guys want to do, I just wanted to make sure you had the numbers.
I would be in favor of just covering our damages, I don't wanna, I don't think we need to get punitive.
Yeah, I, again, that's completely your decision.
What are your thoughts?
I'd be okay with that. Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that we just cover our actual damages, but double-check to make sure that we are covering all of our actual damages.
Yeah, so, that leads us to the payouts, um, payout number eight, uh, that you guys have in front of you.
I made a motion, it's in my second.
All second.
Please move a second, all favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, as of right now, Tina, that is twenty-three, that number I gave you. Dave will probably, I'll let him know, and he'll probably send you the final one here in the next day or two, that way you can go through and double-check all those numbers, to make sure. So, um, uh, so, uh, payout number eight is, and I'm not sure why Sean had to break it into two, but Sean wanted to break it into two different payouts. So, there's a payout for, uh, there's a payout for, um, my numbers are a little wack here, fifteen thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and ninety-one cents. And then there is a payout number nine for the retainage part of it, which is seventy-three thousand, five dollars and ninety-six cents.
So, does the twenty-three, three fifty come off of that?
It, it will, yes, so when she writes her check, she'll write it for that amount less, or whatever she reconciles it into, but it should be that, and then you guys can retain that money for your damages, and then he'll get the remaining.
So, we're releasing the retainage even though we still have punch list items?
We, yes, because punch list items, the, while he has to be, he's legally bound for one year to do all the things that need to be done, the grant can't stay open for an entire year. So, we release everything, so the grant can be closed, but his contract with you states that he has to do something for one full year.
Can we hold some of that money back?
We can, we absolutely can, if that's what you guys want.
I feel like we should, he's not gonna be in some of the dumb here.
Case, throw out a number. How much do you, well, yeah, so, how much, how much time, what do you think it would take you guys, if you, if he just never showed up again, and you had to seed and mulch and stuff?
Ten thousand?
What, what would that cost you?
Like leveling out the sewer plant, taking the dirt away, it munged in this?
Correct.
Fifteen thousand?
Okay, then, what I would suggest is, take fifteen thousand and hold that until he gets that, those, I, those punch list items completed, and then you can release that.
Are you good with that, Jim?
Yes.
Is that a motion, Trish?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So, it will be, whatever these maths are turned out to be, it'll be minus the twenty-three, and then you're gonna hold fifteen, and then you'll give him fifteen when he gets that done. The biggest thing is we have to get the grant into closeout, and to do that, we have to, okay, we're done here with this. So, um, now that we have that done, I will, uh, as long as you guys, I, I assume since we're approving, uh, that you guys can approve eight, nine, then, uh, I will sign these and have Rod sign them, and give them to Sean, 'cause you can get us into closeout.
Make a motion, we approve the payouts?
Aye, Sam.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, do you guys have any questions about the, where we're at with the project? I know you don't visit our digital, uh, head writer and editor. Something like that?
You had, you had like nineteen-eighties book, dude.
Even the film developers like CBS in business, that's okay.
Yeah, do you guys have any questions about, um, the, uh, what we, what, what we, what he did was, um, originally, when he cut open the new manhole and got the flow going, it's actually going to both lift stations still. We were going to give this one and that one a test run at the same time, to see what the flow was in the effluent line, for any throttling situations or anything like that. As far as I know, everything's been good to go, so he should be able to, when he comes into town, uh, bridge that off, and now that whole third of the town will go to the new lift station, and the other one, and they won't go to, to both of them.
But we wanted to, we have that capability.
Um, so, one of Gary's requests was to, uh, not fully close it off, but to leave it open to the point where, uh, should fifteen fifty start to backfill, it could backfill up to that lift station. And then, uh, and, or, um, if this got such a heavy flow that it could go over that and go, um, that's, it's a little unusual, and it's, and, and how that would work, but nonetheless, it would work that way.
And so, if we had to shut fifteen fifty off, this new lift station will?
No, it won't be able to take the full capacity of the other two-thirds of the town. It is, it is for this third of the town, which is most of the industry in town. So, it's taking useful, it's taking, uh, basically from a good chunk of Newton.
Yeah, Newton.
To the, to the west.
Newton West, except for south of twenty-four.
But, yes, the original fifteen fifty, um, will, will still be functioned to the tape.
So, are you saying you're leaving it partially open, or you're saying you're blocking it off, what are you saying?
So, in, in the pipe, um, what you and I had discussed a year ago, was to, to bridge it off to the point where there was still room above, should a backup happen, it can go over that and get to the fifteen fifty.
And that's the way it is right now?
No, right now, it's open to both.
Okay.
And when he comes back to do the seeding and stuff, the la, one of the last things on the punch list will be to balloon that new, that, the old one off for a little while, build that bridge, that dam, and then release it back out. So, it will essentially cut it off from fifteen fifty for regular purposes, emergency stuff, and it would overflow. Right.
We need to come up with a new name for this lift station, 'cause we're both fifteen fifty.
I call, I just call it just Newton, just Newton, but I don't, I think that that's, we had to record it for NIPS go, didn't we? We had to give NIPS go a name, and I think we just called it Newton.
I believe that's...
Fifty fifty east and fifteen fifty west?
Right, and they...
'Cause, 'cause fifteen fifty's been fifteen fifty for thirty-some years.
Right.
It's, so we can't really rename that one.
No one's got a plaque.
Sir?
Is, uh, this going to be able to take more, like you said, uh, on Iroquois, is Iroquois Street we're gonna develop?
Over, yeah.
Yeah, all of this will go to this new lift station.
How much, how much more is it gonna be able to take?
Quite a bit, but it, it, uh, what we're looking at is, is that lift station will handle a third of the town, with the idea that all, all you're doing when you add into a lift station that, that's this size, is it'll just cycle a little quicker, but it'll still handle pushing everything out to the point.
This one technically has more capacity than the other fifteen fifty, though, right? Well...
Well, until you put the upgraded pumps in.
Right.
And then that changes the, that changes it a little.
Right.
But, yes.
As of right now?
Right. So, yeah, it could be expanded.
Do we have that in the works to get the upgraded pumps in?
Uh, I believe, I don't remember where FJF is at on that, um, I know we have the price for them, I don't remember, I don't believe it's ever been approved. As far as I know, I think we were waiting for this to all finish before we messed with that one. But, cause they were gonna come in and do that and put the riser ring on that one and the one on Union to get them up higher. But I think they were gonna do all of that at once.
Anything else, Ryan? Anybody, do you have anything else for Ryan? Anybody have any questions about what we're talking about or anything? Diane, gone.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come tonight. Um, I just, um, excuse me. We have a couple of updates on, on recycling. Um, it's still all the normal items that are listed in the brochure that are non-recyclable, but the newest thing is no plastic bags. Republic doesn't want to take any plastic bags in there of any form, like a garbage bag or even a Walmart sack of any kind. So when everyone is putting their stuff in there, you can put it in a paper sack or if you just put it in there loose. Um, because what's happening with the plastic bags is when they haul it, um, to the stations, then they're considering that contamination. So then those plastic bags are contaminating that entire container and then that's an extra charge for the county, um, to have to take on. So I've been going around to all the town meetings trying to get everybody updated and then trying to help get the word out on that. And then to kind of counteract, act on the backend, I mean, hopefully we can help keep those contamination charges down, but there is a possibility that the county will be considering a different type of lid that would possibly go on the containers then. So then it would be locked and there would just be a slit in there to put things in there. So everything would have to be really compacted and smashed down in order to fit in there. So that is a possibility that that might, that that might come on the backend, but right now I'm just trying to get, get the word out to everybody and let them know, if you see somebody, tell them, please do not put plastic bags in there anymore.
Can you make us a post there?
Yep, I can.
And I, I put some signs on the containers. They're kind of coming off a little bit with the weather, but, um, I've got some new brochures here and, and some extra stuff left over from how, how so hazardous waste.
Isn't today, most of the stuff that gets in that recycle is not recyclable? I mean, it looks like people are using it for trash.
Sometimes people do, so some of them are considered contaminated, but when I go around and check, there are, there are still some that are just, people are doing, people are doing it correctly. So I don't have anybody put-
Can we write us those slips?
Um, probably, yeah. I mean, we're, we're kind of in the, in the middle of the negotiations with, with Republics, with the commissioner. So this, this is a possibility of what's coming down the line.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be beneficial.
Yes. Yes, and a lot of this, um, has come with the new AI technology that is now on the trucks for Republics. So when they are picking up the trucks, they have AI technology on the camera, so it's reading and it's looking at every single thing that goes in there and it's dumped from every single container. So there is, they took out, pretty much took out the human element where you could see maybe some of the stuff was and there was a little percentage in there. So now there's not really a lot of room for, for movement on that. So that's, that's one of the other things that's come along with this. So thank you guys for being great partners on that and if I can leave this review of the town hall, that would be great.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you might have any questions on any of that? We have, uh, we have a sewer credit. Uh, this person left, uh, their hose on outside for about four hours a couple of weeks ago and, uh, they request a leak credit because the water did not go down the sewer. Is that, did you-
Was it?
Tammy Harmon?
Yeah.
So you, you ensure that that didn't go down the sewer? Make a motion to be given that leak credit for the, which is for the sewer. All favor?
Aye.
And then we have one that's gonna be a little bit more difficult. Apparently, the water that leaked and flooded this building, parts of this building, went through their meter, the, the head start and all that. But yet, our meter or our water was off because of that.
So, there are two separate meters in that backside of the room. One meter goes to this kitchen, this bathroom here, and the two bathrooms there and the gym. So all that was killed when the backflow, we shut it all down, there's no water to this side. Then all of Head Start and Right Steps have their own meter for that kitchen, all the bathrooms in the rooms and the senior site. So that is two separate and-
We didn't shut the water, I guess.
Their water was on the whole time.
Yeah.
So why did they have such a huge water?
Well, you had to clear the lines, right?
So-
Throughout all that.
When we-
Cause when you, initially, everything had to get shut off at the main break.
Yeah, everything was shut off at the main break.
But then when it came back on and then after it flooded, you were, you were flushing all the lines, right?
Yeah, I had-
That's where I figured it came from.
Or did it come from, you know, the weekend when we didn't know that we had the leak over there? And it was Friday, from Friday when no one was here until Monday when someone came in.
Well, no, it was Saturday morning.
But that was never on that side. It was only here.
Well, they, there, it says here that their usual bill runs around four hundred dollars a month. They had one bill that was fifteen hundred and thirty-two dollars, another one was five hundred and ninety-eight and another one that was nine hundred and thirty-four.
And that was just the wastewater side?
What?
That's what that's for wastewater?
Like three months of bills?
Well, that's what it says.
And so it's for wastewater?
Oh, no, 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 I'm wrong. The total bill was fifteen thirty-two.
Wait a minute, we haven't been down for three months.
The total, the total bill was fifteen thirty-two of that amount. Five hundred and ninety-eight was for water and nine thirty-four was for wastewater.
Can we credit the wastewater?
So it would've-
Isn't that something that we should commend during the process?
Well, it, it never would've went down, or it would've all went down the sewer. Every bit of it would've. Cause none of that leaked over there. The only thing that was leaking was the backflow that hit the ground and-
So now we're back to why did their bill go so high? Do they have a leak that we, that we don't know about?
It would did.
Well, we have, we do have that one leak and it's pretty extensive right now.
That only, that only leaks when you have- That only leaks when you have that on.
Can we check their meter and make sure that they're not gonna have a high bill this next month and that they don't have a leak?
I can do a radio read on it and see, um, but I'm gonna assume just from when we had it shut off from, from the main break and then Colton and I working on getting all that stuff freed and doing the work while the water was shut off, I had gone through and flushed every, every sink, every toilet and got flushed, made sure it wasn't leaking. Wasn't, wasn't leaking, it wasn't running and was running properly. I went through all of them while he was working on stuff. So it could've been more than an hour that was flushing out lines.
Well, that wouldn't cost a thousand dollars.
That would've been in July? Was that when the?
It was July twenty-seventh.
End of July.
End of July.
It was July twenty-seventh.
So it, it would've been on this last.
Yeah.
Yes.
Would've been on the last bill.
That's what this bill is.
But I wouldn't think it'd be-
I wouldn't think it'd be a thousand bucks for you flush toilets and sinks and-
I can look and see if there's a, if there's, I can do a radio read on it and see.
Let's see if they're normal now, right now for that cycle to this cycle.
For the sewer credit, there's not gonna, all of it's gonna be going down the sewer.
Well, let's, let's, this table is for the night and see if we can figure out what's going on. And then we'll talk about it again.
Yeah, look in the morning.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
What are we expecting them to do for the one of them?
Yeah, in the meantime, that's gonna be due October first.
Well, that would shut it off right now.
That wouldn't be till next month.
And then there'll be a late charge and all that stuff, so.
Could we give them a-
Can we, can we give, can we give them a waiver on that while we figure out if the building has a leak?
I'll, I'll read that tomorrow morning and we'll know immediately tomorrow. And it's only the sixteenth today.
I mean, I guess even if there is a leak and let's say that there's a, you know, a faulty toilet or a sink faucet, that's still going down the sewer.
Right.
Yeah, if it goes down the sewer, our hands are tied. If you have a leak and it's going down the sewer, our hands are tied by the, by the-
I don't know of any leaks over there at all, other than, like the one that when it's running.
There's a gasket missing on one of the faucets, so when it, when they turn it on, it leaks around the top a little bit. But when it's off, it's not leaking at all.
But when it's off, it doesn't. It's off, it's off.
I have a need to be that it's provenance from the flood when you turn it in the insurance where there'd be both water and sewer.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that. So let's, let's give them a, I don't care whether you do it with a waiver or provisional credit or something to figure out what's going on so we're not concurring.
I think you charge them the normal average.
Yeah, and then, uh, if it's from the flood, like Gary said, put on the insurance. If it's not, whatever it is, when we figure it out, we'll deal with it.
And I can know that for sure because when I read those, I can go, it, it stores three months' worth of data, so I can go back
And look and see.
Every single day, every hour for three months.
I think we should do that.
So I'll have that in the morning.
Okay.
Good.
Actually, I can probably do it right now.
IDIM is-
I've got all the stuff in the truck.
Caused us to, causing us to adopt this ordinance that's this thick.
Who is? IDIM.
No, DNR.
Okay.
DNR, DNR and- Plus a bunch of, uh, we, we get, IDIM makes their over, um,
Giants of Oops?
Indiana Division of Environmental Management, but this is DNR. If we go to, uh, control of floodplain, now, the only floodplain we have is basically that ditch that runs behind Steve Carter's house, behind fertilizer plant and, and in Burton's pasture. And we have, we have not allowed any building in there. We don't intend to allow any building in there. And the only thing that's in that floodplain is a tiny little corner of Burton's tool shed. But even with that being said, we still have to go to class, we still have to adopt this big thick ordinance and we still have to do all this stuff because they're DNR.
Yeah.
And they require it. So, uh, do you do, and do this on readings or can we just make a motion to pass it?
Especially with the motion to pass it.
So they forced our hand on this. There's language in here that says we're not gonna allow any building into floodplain and I'll make a motion we adopt the ordinance. All favor?
That doesn't go with the brand title, right?
No, no, it's all, it's all that. The only thing that they have it designated as floodplain is that area. And, and I don't know if much of it is actually behind Carter. More of it is just behind the fertilizer plant and out in Burton's lot.
So that's new because there hasn't been a floodplain in Goodland for, for a long time now.
But, yeah, that's fairly new and, and-
But this is their notice. We have a floodplain now and-
Much, much ado about that.
Probably get ready.
Okay, uh, attorneys. Anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss with the town? Mira?
On social media, the community is asking for another townwide yard sale and I was just wondering if you guys would accept that. They're wanting to have it the first weekend of October.
Looks for me. Looks for you?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
I have a quick question. Um, on the Goodland website page, the goodlandian.gov, the button for meeting notes is broken. It's the only button that will not work. You have to physically Google the search Goodland, Indiana meeting to get the minutes and they haven't been updated since June. How often are those updated?
They're updated every three months.
Every three months? Is that like a three-month group or?
Yep. That's what they said would work best for them.
Okay.
I was just- We'll let them know that the button doesn't work.
Who is the man?
Um, what's at twenty-four seven?
That's who services our website, Chris. That's who our annual contract is with. Do we need to sign the service of this job?
I don't know what she said too, so yes, who's? Anybody else? Will be up here reviewing the sunny plains and I'm gonna make a motion to raise that.